We're reconvening as the Waukesha County Council, Legislative Session 2024-02 for January 16, 2024. The next item on the open agenda is a presentation by the Liquor Dispensary Task Force. We have with us Michael Dunn, President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, and Bill Chambers should be around.
He's on his way.
He wouldn't leave you here on your own, would he?
Is there any chance?
We'll wait.
He's on his way.
Okay. I don't know, Michael, if you want to do any just introductions or...
I was prepared. It's okay with you.
Sure, we'll wait. Okay.
There he is. He's coming in. Let's wait.
We also have Mr. Bill Chambers, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce.
Right on time. Hello. Hello, Mr. President. How are you?
Good.
Members of the council, everybody. Mr. President, afternoon now. Mr. President, members of the council, Bill Chambers, President and CEO, Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, to my left, Mike Dunn, President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, you all know the county executive, Mr. Erdano.
Thank you. We appreciate the work you gentlemen have been doing for this committee. I know it's been about a year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we do appreciate that, and we'll certainly give you the floor and let you begin.
Well, the purpose of the task force was to hopefully come to some consensus about allowing our license holders, restaurants, bars, and we have, I think, three separate licenses in the county, to have the choice to purchase spirits from Maryland licensed distributors. As you all know, right now, they have no choice. They must purchase all spirits from the dispensary. Whether the pricing is favorable or not, they have no choice. We are one of two jurisdictions left in the state of Maryland with this system. It is antiquated. It is unfair competition. This request to the council is for legislation in Annapolis to change one word. Instead of our license holders being forced to purchase from one entity, they will have choice to purchase from licensed distributors across the state. And this will give them at least a competitive edge in looking for the best pricing possible when they purchase their spirits. So that is why we are before you today, to ask for your endorsement of that request.
Okay. Bill, there was one other issue that I know came up, which was sort of, I think, initiated this whole process, and that was also, I believe, that there was a concern about the dispensary selling wine as well, and whether we know whether that needs to be included in the state legislation, whether that's we go back to an MOU or something to that effect. I know it was part of your observations and your recommendations.
The original bill did not have that in there. I actually have a copy of the bill, if you would like it, that actually shows that the beer and wine would be taken out, so it's not too much. And I talked to Joe, who is the bill writer, and he said it would just be, if you wanted to include that as amendment, that could be part of your letter of support. But I do have a copy of it, so you could see it with that red line on there.
Appreciate that.
Is that the one that you just sent down? Oh, this is...
It's new and improved.
This is as of today?
No, no, no. This is what the bill would look like if we did an amendment to take out for the dispensaries to have beer and wine at all. That originally was not in the bill that you have.
Okay.
But there's a red line version. I think it's page two and three. I think that there's a difference.
I think initially, we're looking to, as the phrase would go, to not compete in private enterprise. Government shouldn't be competing with private enterprise, and I think initially, there was a call to shut it down completely. But, you know, after discussions, and we really appreciate the input that we received from everybody, we realized that the dispensary certainly did serve a great purpose for the smaller individuals who wanted advice in limited amounts and didn't have that liberty to go to the distributor. So that was great. The second part of that issue, again, was the beer and wine. So this is not new. This is a year old. So I think the council is very familiar with what we're looking for, and I think, you know, from my perspective, I think you've really done an excellent job on getting this. And we do appreciate the input, Mr. Laws. We did get your email. We appreciate your input as well. Any comments from council?
I have some questions. First off, this isn't a bill. This is a legislative request, so it's not a final bill. And the legislative, it's got the LR number up on the right-hand side.
Right.
So anything, if we were to approve anything today, this could be sent to Annapolis and changed. So it's not a bill. We need to keep that in mind. Look at the upper right-hand side, it says LR.
Right. But I think it is the fractality of the bill. I mean, it says a bill entitled, so we recognize it as a draft, Joe.
It's just a legislative request.
I understand.
I got a lot of questions. It snowed yesterday, so I had lots of time to study this and...
Wish it was snowing today.
Yeah, there you go. Wish it snowed out, right? You guys have been at this almost a year, and a few months ago, I asked for the minutes of your meetings, and I was told that there was no minutes. And I know you're not held by any laws because you're just a group that, I guess, I don't know, if you asked to be formed, or the county executive asked you to do it, I don't know how that all went. But there were no minutes kept, and there were no, you know, even for the people that would want to know what went on, or the people that were on the task force that weren't at some of the prior meetings or whatever. How come we didn't have any minutes? Why wasn't there minutes?
Well, there were notes taken each and every meeting, and at the start of the subsequent meeting, so if we met three weeks ago, first thing we would do at the beginning of the following meeting was to recap what was discussed then. So we kept what we called a parking lot, list of those items that we had gone over, and that parking lot was presented. The task force, to be clear, was formed by the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Greater Salisbury Committee was not asked for or requested by any government entity. We did have Council Vice President Merritt and Director of Administration Bunkie Lufman were at, they were ex officio members of the committee, if you will. So while there were no, quote, "formal minutes," unquote, there were most definitely notes taken.
When I asked for the minutes, I wasn't furnished with even the notes.
Well, we were not asked to furnish notes. We were asked to furnish minutes, and there weren't any minutes that were taken.
Also, was told by one of the members that these meetings were invitation-only? Is that correct?
We had guests come in virtually every meeting to bring up a different perspective on where they wanted to see changes made, especially in choice, having the ability to have choice with purchase of spirits. So we didn't limit, if somebody wanted to attend, Councilman Holloway, we didn't tell them, no, this is some private club.
It's also worth pointing out that there were two members, so the general manager of the Liquor Dispensary Task Force and one of the liquor dispensary members, appointed members, were also part of the task force.
Were they part of the task force for the entire task force?
Virtually all of it, yes, sir.
When this was decided to be brought to us for the 20th, not the 20th, excuse me, I'm exaggerating, for like the 10th time, 5th time, did all the members of the task force sign off on this and agree to this?
There was consensus agreement that the current system of monopoly, of allowing absolutely no choice for someone that employs people and pays taxes in how they purchase their spirits, there was absolute consensus.
From all the members?
There was absolute consensus, correct.
That consensus was reached probably the second or third meeting of the task force.
Is there anything, Joe, in here that you read in the brief book that you had an issue with?
Yeah, there's lots of things. I've got a few more questions, you know. I understand you have one member resign because he said there was a predetermined objective of the task force. Can you explain what that meant, or what he meant about that?
We're here to get endorsement on making a change to allow license holders to purchase spirits from whomever they like that's a licensed distributor in Maryland. If you'd like us to come back at a separate session, go through all the recommendations we had, talk about nuances, things unrelated to why we're here today, we're happy to do that.
Well, I mean, I think this is all related to what we're doing today, isn't it?
Absolutely not.
Hey, Joe, what we're getting at is we're trying to look at the context of the legislative bill itself, not the committee, but the bill itself.
It's not a bill, John. It's a legislative request.
Well, it's the only thing in front of us that we're debating on right now, and whether or not this is sufficient or not.
Furnished to us about 14, 15 hours ago. But I have one more question, and I'll let it go.
Okay.
And I would like, if possible, somebody from the liquor dispensary to make some comments, if they would. In one of the first drafts that came out, you made, it was printed in there that you were requesting that a forensic audit be done on the liquor dispensary. Was there any evidence of any wrongdoing, crimes going on? Why that was...
That word was removed. It was, we wanted a third party, the comptroller, to kind of do a reset, set the reset button on the dispensary. Also, an audit from the comptroller will allow some really concrete recommendations on how they can improve their business practices, their technological improvements, so it would be an all-encompassing looksee from the comptroller's office. And yeah, that's what we recommended that.
If you Google forensic audit, most of the time, that is derived from some issue of there being some wrongdoing or crime or something.
We didn't have any evidence of that. Again, that's why that word was stricken from the final report.
Josh.
So there was a gentleman here earlier this morning. I want to make sure that his question gets answered before I ask my question, and I don't, maybe the county executive, maybe this goes to you, I'm not sure, but Brian, I have terrible handwriting, so I'm not sure what his last name is, but he said, okay, said, he brought about questions about eliminating the dispensary. He said, "Is a hybrid system to then eliminate system?" is what he said, basically going from talking about trying to have a hybrid system to the straight-up eliminating, functionally eliminating the dispensary. He said there's multiple, it goes basically, what's it, he said, "How is the revenue being replaced?" There's, he said, "This is going to benefit a couple businesses." He mentioned the revenue cap and the maximum that we're paying for piggyback tax. And then he mentioned, "A few businesses will benefit. Will prices go down?" He had a question mark. But his big question was, "How does the dispensary going away help the county?" And I think what he's trying to get at, and mind you, his words are basically, "How are we replacing the revenue that we're going to potentially lose? And how does this overall help the county?" So before I get to my question, I want to make sure that we, he asked us that we answer that.
That wasn't in the purview of our group, to look at revenue replacement, even if there is any, that just was not something we looked at. That wasn't the purpose of it.
Well, and I don't think we would be able to even see what the revenue loss would be without doing this. I mean, I couldn't even begin to project. Right now, from what the details that Justin gave, that it was what the, was it 28%?
28.
28%, but they are still able to purchase from the dispensary. So I actually talked to the gentleman, I've texted RS and let him know, he didn't have the bill in front of him. And so therefore, the dispensary is not going away by any means. So any person who wants to purchase, you, me, we would go to the dispensary because those are the stores that are available to us. This is only for the restaurant owners. So to sit here and guess as to what that projection loss might be, if any, would, I mean, I couldn't even begin to guess what that would be.
And then I guess, acknowledging, of course, this will bill, just process-wise, this goes to, usually Alcohol Day is the day that we do all these things, which has to be in the hopper by February 19th, and Alcohol Day itself is February, pardon, February 19th is Alcohol Day, February 9th in the hopper. I guess, do we want to go over the changes that have been proposed from the version that we saw originally with the may or shall to then to this version? What are the changes?
So that change, I had a feeling that it was going to be brought up about the wine and beer being sold at the dispensary, and that if we didn't want that, the newest bill that I literally just handed you would take that out. If that is what council wants to go forward with, I will let the bill drafter know that this needs to be added. The delegation, who is, you know, are experts at this, about, you know, bills and putting them in front of, like, they are not concerned about the timing at all. They feel that we still have plenty of time. I literally sent a text message to Joe saying, "I really need the finalized bill because right now you are right, it is LR." He said, "It's not changing from that." And I said, "I still need the bill." So, you know, this is what I could put in front of you right now. I can't make Annapolis move faster. I wish I could. I think we all wish I could, because I probably wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be up there. But right now, it will be council's decision to take the bill that you got last night or yesterday, that does not remove beer and wine, or you can take the one I put in front of you with that amendment and say, "We support the dispensary not selling beer and wine." So those are the two recommendations. The only, that would be the only change, is that they, everything would be over 16% that they sell.
And of course, I always feel bad, there's folks in the audience who show up and they want to participate and they don't see anything here to go over. Do you mind just walking through the bill?
You have the copies.
I'll give you my copy.
Do me a favor, to Josh. I think you could really wrap this up really with just reading the very first paragraph, which says, "And that establishes exactly what the purpose of this bill is, in a nutshell."
Sure.
I ask you to do that because I think the public does need to know exactly what will be happening. Go ahead.
Yeah. Waukesha County Alcoholic Beverages Monopoly of Liquor Control Board and Dispensary repeal, so not get rid of, repeal. So for the purpose of repealing the monopoly of the Liquor Control Board and its dispensaries on the sale and distribution of certain wine and liquor at wholesale in Waukesha County, authorizing the holders of certain alcoholic beverage licenses to purchase alcoholic beverages from dispensary or wholesaler, repealing the prohibition on delivery of certain wine and liquor by certain wholesalers, and generally relating to the alcoholic beverages in Waukesha County.
To the delivery part, can you explain that a little more? I don't, pardon me, I'm not in the industry and I don't follow all of this. What does that reference to? I know that that part was added from the original...
Yeah. The dispensary, to their credit, is now offering delivery services, which the distributors also do. So to their credit, they want to be more in line and more competitive, and that's what this change does. It creates competition, and that's good for business.
Mr. Cannon?
Sure.
I've got a question or two on here I think would be best answered by members of the liquor dispensary. Could you request they come forward if somebody would like to?
I'll let you decide what representative you want here.
I'll say I would like somebody that was at all these meetings to come forward. Melody, could you come forward?
Joe, I don't want to get into the nuts and bolts of the meetings again. I want to stay focused on this legislative bill.
John, you know, this is what we're doing. We're doing something that's affecting a lot of revenue for Waukesha County, or potentially affect revenue.
That's why I want to focus on the bill, Joe.
You know, we've heard this morning from different council members about transparency, and we've heard about revenues, and we're sitting here today in front of these folks, thank you for your service, all of you, trying to get to the bottom of this and see what we're going to do. And I've got a decision to make here today, and I've got a lot of questions.
If you gentlemen could state your name for the public, thank you.
Director Laws. I'm representing the Waukesha County Liquor Control Board, or as it's more commonly known, dispensary, and have for many years.
Justin Collis. I am the general manager of the dispensary system.
All right. Thank you, John.
If you want to ask... Okay. So Mr. Chambers said you'd started delivering. What other changes have you done or are in the works presently to provide better service or prices for the customers in Waukesha County?
A suggestion was made that we market the dispensary more like a private business, so we have begun having digital and printed advertisements in paper, internet. We've made it known that we will price match, so we're trying to get that money that's leaking out of our county into Delaware, we're trying to keep that here. We have begun the construction of a new website, which will offer a web-based ordering platform for the bars and restaurants. Several members of the task force expressed, you know, a desire to be able to order that way, so the website is currently under construction. So we have also worked with several of the task force members on an idea that they came up with, which was called pass-through discounting. So the dispensary is buying power, if we're buying large volume, we're getting the best price. And there, some of the members said, "Well, if I only want five cases, but you bought 100, and there's a five-case price on the distributor website, can you give me the five-case price?" That negates the purpose of me dealing with the distributor, and our money stays in the county. And we sat down, we looked at it, and we said, "Yeah, that's absolutely possible, just due to the buying power." Because there's still, there's going to be a smaller profit, but there's still going to be a profit there that goes back to the taxpayers, and they get the volume price. So we've agreed to do that as well.
I understand that, from what was said today, that most of the people on this task force agreed to these changes. Do you stand behind that?
We were not present at the last meeting, so...
Your board wasn't present at the meeting?
No.
That made the final decision?
No.
If I could just add again, for the third time, consensus on what we're in front of you all today was met last April.
Why did it take this long to get it to our table if you made up your mind in April?
That's the item that we were focused on. If you read the report, you'll see there were a number of other recommendations that were born out of the work of the license holders, the members of the task force. This particular recommendation, which requires state legislation, received consensus from the group early on. The final report, which was agreed upon at the last meeting, included all of the other information contained in it, if you've read it.
Any questions? Shane? Shane?
I just wanted to say that I do agree, I'm a business friendly, don't get me wrong. I'm business friendly. I'm concerned about, the first thing I was concerned when I heard about this was, I don't want liquor to be sold on the corner stores. We talk about alcoholism, and alcoholism is a disease. We talk about drug abuse, we have alcohol abuse. And you have, this is a college town, and I want to make sure that there are, I know you can't monitor them all because they can send somebody in '21 and buy some alcohol, that's a reality. But I just want to make sure that the liquor stores that we do have, keep them, the restaurants that sell alcohol, keep them, but we don't want the corner stores. We don't want corner stores selling, especially in the low-income neighborhoods. That is my main concern. And I look at, I look at one of the paragraphs, because I read this, and some of it I got mixed up on, you know, I'm going to tell you the truth. I see one thing that I'm hearing from the manager here, that they've made some changes. So a paragraph or a sentence that's in there, "Task force is also recommending change that will alter the business as usual practice we think need to go away." So I think it should be in there that they have done that. Whatever the compromise they've done, like you said, they are delivering, whatever things they're doing to make it easier for you, we need to add that to the legislation, like you're negotiating, working together, that would show that you're working together. So if you add it, that they're delivering, add that they're getting ready to market, or follow some of your recommendations that you recommended. And as, I don't believe in doing away with the dispensary because the county needs all the money they can get. We need all the money we can get. So if they get close to a million dollars, and I would think that research the last five years, what you received from the liquor board, and we just heard that there's going to be a shortfall in Annapolis, basically, we need all the money the county can get. And if this is one of the ways that we can get money, don't throw it away. It's work, I don't care if Montgomery County, I don't care if we're the only one, so suppose, I'm going to be funny now, I'm being, suppose 22 counties said, "We're going to jump in a volcano." Are we going to follow those 22 counties? So let us be one county that has a dispensary system, because I bet you anything that some of the counties that don't have the dispensary system, people are complaining. You might not hear it, but I bet you they're not satisfied. So I, all the bottom line, I do not want the liquor dispensary system be jeopardized by this legislation.
If I could respond to that, I'd like to simply say that we have run a projection, Justin and his staff have made some projections on what the impact of this would be, and it's in the neighborhood of $360,000, we think, the impact of opening up the wholesale sale to distributors as well as the dispensary. So it has a significant impact, and of course, the dispensary would rather that you didn't do this. I mean, it's, in some ways, it's a modest change, the hybrid system sounds good on paper, but it has failed in other counties. When you've gone to a hybrid system in Somerset or Worcester County, the dispensary disappeared within a five-year period. And with it, some of the benefits to the smaller operators, the smaller restaurants, Elks Clubs and fraternal organizations and people like that that benefit, people who benefit from the advantage of the volume pricing, and people who will benefit from not just delivery, but maybe a couple of times a week delivery instead of one time at the convenience of the distributor. So some good things have come out of this process. The dispensary has made some reforms on delivery, on public relations, on volume discounts, on wholesale prices, on beefing up its website. Not going to say the whole thing is, has not been a good process, but the bottom line is, the hybrid system may not work. It will undoubtedly cost the county some significant revenue, and there are a lot of technical defects with these bills. I guess I should not close without saying something about the beer and wine. We hardly sell any beer at the store that has a lot of retail, we sell no beer, I'm sorry, at the store that has competitors all around it in South Salisbury. We sell very little wine in that store, but the store up north sells some wine because nobody else is selling wine up there. So there's an element of public convenience to the dispensary, too. I would say, really, there is a lack of convenience to the public to buy liquor on the east and west ends of the county. But up north, you know, people come from the Parker Athletic Complex in the summer, people who are here for softball tournaments, and they tell the dispensary, they don't understand why it can't sell beer, they don't understand what the reluctance is, and they don't have a lot of outlets for certain types of products in certain parts of the county. The dispensary is trying to serve the public as well as serve the citizens by making a healthy contribution to the county's bottom line. So I hope that whatever you do, whatever concept you endorse, that you don't take it a step further and hurt what we're already doing. This is going to have some impact if you open up the wholesale, or recommend that the legislature open up the wholesale. It will have an impact, and maybe the dispensary can weather that, but I hope you don't cut deeper and further and damage it even more.
I think it would be really hard to make that projection because we haven't been there yet. So if you, as the dispensary, stay competitive, I don't see any reason why Mr. Hannah, or Mr. Scott, or whoever, wouldn't still purchase from you, but I want to remind this council, you, and Mr. Holloway specifically, you all sent a letter of support for a distillery bill that you never saw. It was never in front of you, and you did a letter of support, but keep in mind, that bill will not work without this. This is a two-part thing, so you've already said that you would support the distillery bill, but in order for that bill to work, we have to repeal the monopoly. We have to, or else that bill does not work. So I just wanted to remind you that you all did a consensus on that bill without it being in front of you.
Shane, one of the earliest positions that we took was that there would not be additional dispensaries opened, additional liquor stores, such as what many people were concerned about, about a liquor store on every corner. That was agreed upon, that this would not increase the number of stores whatsoever.
The number stayed three in the bill, so...
Josh?
Well, you know, I don't think I ever, I would never, if I were a person designing a system, obviously, I wouldn't want, or working in the county, I would never want the county to be involved in many of the things that it is involved, including having a dispensary, or a, you know, a nursing home, or other things that we have. But nonetheless, they are very real obligations, and they have very real impacts on our budget. But nonetheless, they are very real obligations, and they have very real impacts on our budget. So I want to make sure that we're, however we make changes, that we're, we're having a, a soft landing space, that we can be, uh, that that can be predictable, and that we can, uh, know that's still advancing us. So I, I guess, and by the way, you know, like I said, I still, I couldn't tell you what a Class A, B, C, D, I, you know, F, G, L, M, N, O, P, whatever, you know, like, uh, none of, not my world.
Alphabet licensing.
Yeah, but I, I respect the folks that are in it, and I, God bless them, they can, you know, I listen to them. Um, but, uh, I guess here, the red language that I'm seeing in the version here, so is the red language what we're deleting, or we're adding?
So the red language in there, that is a bill that would take the wine out of the dispensary. If you want the dispensary to till, to still be able to sell the wine, then the original bill that you had would be the one to go with. But that was one thing that President Cannon had mentioned and the task force. So I wanted you to have two different versions. The one version has them still selling wine, the red version has them not selling wine. So that will be a decision that you will have to make, um, if they're able to do that.
Okay, and then just one more time in Lehman's version, what's the impact to the dispensary specifically? And, and by the way, I, I do not think we should, I, I think we should allow the dispensary to be as competitive as humanly possible. If they want to have wine, beer, uh, you know, lottery tickets, I don't care what you want to have, whatever you gotta do to bring more money back to the county, do it. That's in my view. But can you please tell me what this does in order to, uh, how is this gonna change?
Josh, how can I know that? I don't know what that's gonna look like.
No, no, I'm saying, with this bill, what does that mean for them? I'm just trying to get it, I really don't.
So this bill reflects exactly what the task force wanted. So the bill allows our Class B licenses, our restaurant owners, clubs, the golf courses, to be able to purchase from the dispensary, or from whatever wholesaler they want. That's it. That's it. There's no more additional liquor stores, there's nothing additional that they're doing. It literally is allowing our Class Bs to be able to purchase from the dispensary or from another distributor.
Okay, and then, and then, of course, the red would be if we wanted to go take a step further, say.
That would, the red would be if you do not want the dispensary to be able to sell wine.
And what would be the purpose of that?
Because people like Mike Fazard, people who sell beer and wine, can't sell liquor, so it's really an unfair market. So it would sort of.
Like, they don't give money, and the, he doesn't send over the same amount of money over to us, to the, to the county, right? We, we require that revenue for us to operate.
I, I, I'm just, I'm giving, I don't, I'm asking you to make the decision, I'm just giving you, these are the two options.
Josh, the premise is that we honestly, personally, from my position, I think, the other members of the council, and the committee, uh, that we shouldn't be competing, government should not be competing in free enterprise. I get what you're saying, but.
Hundred percent.
We could open up a car dealership on Route 50 and probably make money, but we don't compete in private enterprise, and that's why we're concerned about the beer and wine, that's why initially we were going to eliminate the store completely, but then we realized that there could be a little bit of more benefit for everyone to keep the hybrids. So there's a compromise of the hybrid, but we don't feel that the beer and wine is necessary for the county to be making money from that, when, when, as, as was said, when you have other stores, local stores, who put their investments, and their family's investments, into their stores to make money as well. It's, it's sort of an unfair balance to do that.
And also, I just have a really quick question. Are we going to bring up any of the restaurant owners, the Class Bs, who this affects, since we brought up the liquor dispensary? Oh, we're not, okay. Just one, some are here, so.
I agree, I agree with John. I think it's important that a business owner can buy from whoever's the cheapest. Um, you're right, government shouldn't be involved in the, in the private sector and business. So I, I agree with that.
Now, I just want to reiterate, the Chamber of Commerce represents the vast majority of the restaurants and the three license holders who are able to sell liquor now in Wycomico County. And to a woman and a man, who is a general manager and owner of one of those establishments, they all greatly desire to have the freedom of choice when they purchase. They have the freedom of choice to purchase toilet paper, they want the same thing with their spirits.
Yeah, so, um, I think this is, I think this is great, having a hybrid system. Um, you never know where the future lies, but whatever it takes to, uh, allow our restaurants to acquire more money, uh, then they can pay into the tax base, and then they can hire more people that will pay into the tax base, and that income tax that we have to charge will pay into the tax base. So all of this money that we're maybe losing, we're actually more than likely going to recapture through other tax avenues. So I think if it's gonna make people in our community more money, then I think that is something that we should absolutely pursue. Thank you. Yep. Um, I was really hoping, you know, and I've talked about this for a long time, and I've talked to members of the, this, um, dispensary board, and said, you know, I don't have any problem with, you know, a hybrid system. But my problem is, more so, is how this has been handled, and I'm gonna read a statement, like I say, I had all day yesterday. I don't like typing, but occasionally I get into it. Um, and, you know, we, things are brought to us all the time, and most of the time, when somebody from one of our departments sits in front of us and tells us what they want to do, they can tell us what the outcome. And what we're hearing today is we're gonna make a decision on something that we have no idea what the outcome's gonna be, none whatsoever. Mrs. Giordano just said that. I have no idea of how this is gonna work, if, how much it's gonna cost us. How do, how do you sit here and vote to pass something that we have no clear idea on what the outcome? I mean, we don't even have a, a, a hint of what it is, you know?
Joe, do you know how much your store's gonna make next year?
I don't have a store, Mrs. Giordano.
Okay, well, when you had a store, did you know what the next year's profits were gonna be?
I have projections.
Yeah, projections, right. I mean, but, but I, I can't give you a number, I mean, maybe, like, business community, could you give a number on that? We just don't know.
The body can.
Right.
You know, it comes down to the fact of what is the county's money and what isn't the county's money. We don't feel that we, that honestly, that the county should be competing in the free enterprise system. It's no different, Joe, than how many people criticize us because we have the revenue cap. How much money could Wycomico County be making if we don't have a revenue cap, right? I mean, you get harassed by it, so do I, and Mike Dunn.
I think I have an answer, I have an answer for that, John.
Michael will tell you that, that, oh, you know, you've just given up 17 million dollars over the last five years because you have a revenue cap. Well, we say, well, that's the taxpayers' money, it's not ours, and we don't have to go, we don't have to grab for every cent that's out there, just do what we think is in the best interest of the public as a whole, so.
Well, you know, being you speak about the public, John, we've never had a public hearing on this, and I think we need to have a public hearing before we send any kind of consensus letter up.
I think over the last year, I think, I think over the last year, we have had a public.
We've not had a public hearing on this matter, no, sir, we haven't.
Well, if it's a legislative, well.
I mean, I don't think it would hurt, I mean, we'll see how many people in the community want the bill.
What'd you say the timeframe was?
Um, I think Alcohol Day is February, I mean.
Nineteenth.
We've got to have something in the hopper by the ninth, so by, realistically, three days before that is what you want to have, to have a bill drafted, drop it in.
Well, I don't think it's, Joe, honestly, I, honestly, I think if we're being straightforward to each other, I think the public is more than aware of what we're discussing today. This has been, this same topic has been out in the public for over a year.
John, they had meetings that nobody hardly knew anything about. How's it been out in the public?
I don't, I'm not gonna agree with you on that, Joe.
If I may, on, on that point, Mr. Holloway, so, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit business, business organization, as is the Greater Salisbury Committee. We are not a government entity, we're not a statutory agency, we're not a regulatory agency. We have task forces all the time, one of them later today on Water and Sewer. It's a Greater Salisbury Committee task force that's set up. So we're not required, um, to hold minutes, to have minutes, but that is a far cry from saying that we were just winging it. Um, and I'm not saying you're saying we were winging it. I, I would like to add just a couple of things. Shane, to your point, to be clear, the task force met, I don't know, once every three to four weeks since March, and we concluded in early December. Very, very early on, um, we tilted away from, if you will, getting rid of the liquor dispensary system. With Justin there, with Melody Carter there, we, as a task force, that was not on, that was not open for discussion. What was open for discussion instead was giving these bars, restaurants, Elks Clubs, Moose Lodges, et cetera, the opportunity to purchase their product from the private market, not just from the liquor dispensary system. So that's all that's being asked today. This is not about getting rid of the liquor dispensary system, it's not about putting a liquor store on every corner. It's a very simple thing to open the market from a monopoly, to end the monopoly in this particular case for your constituents who are bar and restaurant owners, et cetera. The other thing, to be clear, and, and you asked it, that's why I wanted to, um, allude to it, um, delivery, one of the recommendations of the task force, delivery services should be offered by the LDS to its commercial customers, and then we put a comma, "delivery has begun by the LDS as of spring of 2023." And then further down, we say, "We feel strongly that the LDS has to make changes. To their credit, they have shown a strong desire to implement changes, a new delivery system for its commercial customers being a prime example." So, Joe, I'm gonna look back to you, when, when you got talking about the consensus. So again, when we arrived at the things as a task force, there were 12, 13, 14 members of it, okay, we agreed to this, let's put that on the parking lot. One of the things we agreed to was to not close the liquor dispensary system, to avoid a liquor store on every corner. Check, that was, that was put there. One of the other things that was agreed to, very, very early on, by consensus, was, let's open the opportunity for our bar and restaurant owners to have choice. That's it. By the way, it's really important to know, um, you've got bar and restaurant owners sitting right behind us. If the LDS provides the opportunity, which they've done a great job over the years, to their credit, if they offer the best price and the best delivery option, guess what? These guys sitting behind us, they're still have every right and every opportunity to purchase their liquor from the liquor dispensary system. If by chance, they get a better deal from Joe's distributor, not, Joe, I know you're not opening a distributor business, let's call it Josh's distributorship, um, then they can purchase their liquor from them. On any given week, Brew River could purchase their liquor from the liquor dispensary system or from an outside distributor. Will this have an economic impact on their bottom, bottom line, as Mr. Laws has just put forth? Absolutely. It's 28% of their bottom line. Will they lose all 28% of that bottom line? That, to Ms. Giordano's, to the county executive's point, that's to be determined. But they are given, the liquor dispensary system is being given every opportunity to continue to provide for its customers, pricing and product that they've been able to deliver since all of this started. This is just opening a different avenue for these folks to perhaps do better on the pricing and delivery and other such things.
You keep saying they will lose, it's not them that's gonna lose, it's, it's the county that's gonna lose revenue. It's not they, I mean, they're, if they're still there, they're gonna be there. It's not them that's gonna lose. So, Mr. Cannon, we need to schedule a public hearing.
I want to take a consensus now, Joe, I think we've had plenty of time to discuss.
Consensus on having a public hearing?
No, consensus on what we have in front of us right now. If you'd wanted a public hearing, Joe, you could have asked for it over the last year. I think the public's been given more notice than, than that's.
Yeah, well, I've been saying the year, so you can too, right?
I guess so.
Let me just add one thing, and this person is behind us, told me the difference in their bottom line. This is a business that employs people, pay taxes, people who pay rent, citizens, employees of restaurants. This particular establishment here in downtown Salisbury said their ability to have choice, he ran the numbers, and it was $100,000 based on his past purchases that he will save by having the opportunity to buy from distributors. And he told me what he would do with that. He'd give his employees raises, and he'd hire new people. This is just one byproduct that's important for everyone to realize, making this change is far more impactful on these constituents, the owners of restaurants and bars, than just the bottom line changes that'll take place at the dispensary.
I think just last comment, I mean, on that note, I, I think that is very important, and we want to, of course, support business owners who want to do well, who want to thrive, um, but obviously, we are in a very tricky, tricky situation, and I say we, I mean just Wycomico County. When I was at the Maryland City Counties Conference a couple, month ago, you know, I ran into Evan Glass. He is the, he is the president of the Montgomery County Council. He saw my Wycomico side, he goes, he knows that we are the two that are left, um, but he's also brought up the disparity grant. We've just gotta be, and which, by the way, I see Ms. Giordano, I see it.
Well, it's just frustrating, because we've done this over and over and over again, and you had a letter from the Attorney General stating that one has nothing to do with the other, and, Josh, let me finish. The disparity grant was a legislative bill, it was a bill. So it is, it is, it is, it would have, they would have to repeal ours, Prince George's County, they are not going to do that.
They don't have to, they can, at any point in time, they can write us out, and they don't have to continue to do so.
Josh, the governor gave us an addition of 3 million.
No, I'm not saying that that's a, I'm not saying that's likely to happen, I'm saying they are very much aware, and that is a very real situation. With the, i- is anyone here disagree that the red lights of the economy are flashing? I think everyone agrees. So I'm just saying tread careful, carefully as much as humanly possible. That the citizens of Montgomery County are spending 11, 12 million dollars a year to give, to giving their money to us, that's really great of them, I want to make sure that they continue to do that. But the more that we chip away, uh, the more that they pay attention, and they're, it's not like they're not paying attention, that's, that's my key piece, is running into the, uh, to Mr. Glass in the elevator, it's not like he's not paying attention. So I'm just saying it's very, we need to be very tread lightly. So if this means us moving forward with a hybrid system, one year and no simple changes, and then if you want to come back a couple of years, check, check, you know, change it, I, I, I just make sure that we are being as cautious as humanly possible, because we don't have the bandwidth that the rest of these, it's great that Worcester County got rid of theirs, I was with, uh, you know, with Jimathias when we did that. Those days, by the way, Worcester County has a very different amount of money, that they have a very different constituency, we are not them. So we, as Wycomico County, one of the top three poorest counties in the state per capita, this is a very serious issue, and I'm, I'm glad some folks do well, a whole lot of our group, you know, we don't, and so we can't be pulling from reserves in the future. So I guess, I guess what I'm just, and just throwing out there, moving forward, that's great, but we just need to just take it very simple, step by step. So whatever that small step is, if you want to move in that direction, fine, but let's be very, let's just walk out on ice.
I'm gonna wrap this up. Jeff, you wanted a comment, you haven't made a comment yet.
Yeah.
You haven't had the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you. Um, first off, Justin and Victor, all the board members, thank, thank you for the work that you do with the LDS. Stores are clean, shelves are stocked, um, you guys run a tight ship, so thank you. And Bill and Mike, thank you for putting together the task force. Mr. Lufman and I sat there for 10 months, basically flies on the wall. We, I, I think we contributed to the discussion a handful of times, because we were there to observe and not necessarily contribute. And there was a lot of spirited discussion, no pun intended, but, um, we got through it, a lot, lot of tough, tough, um, topics that we had to go through, and, and thank you guys for that. The interest of transparency, we heard a lot about that today, uh, the lost revenue, um, Mr. Laws, thank you for that projection, um, you know, at, at least we have a number to go by. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's 9% sales tax on alcohol, right? And, and none of that comes to the county, it all goes to the state, is that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, just, this is basically for, for public knowledge, because everybody's watching. Um, I, I knew the answer, but there's a lot of people that I'm sure are not aware of how it works. Um, so, so the alcohol that's purchased, whether it's from the dispensary or distributor, the tax is still gonna go to the state, no matter what. And I think I remember, not to throw the executive under the bus.
Oh, it's been happening all day, Jeff, go ahead, it's good.
No, seriously, um, earlier, well, early in 2023, we were all at a legislative breakfast where this was a topic of discussion, and the statement was made that if I can't replace this lost income, I shouldn't be in this job.
That's very true.
So.
It's already been done.
So.
Already done.
Ball's in your court.
I will be presenting it next month, so.
Okay.
It's already made up.
Let's, let's get the consensus, Jeff, on this, in front of us. Yes or no?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Shani?
I'm abstaining, because I don't see this as a bill, I think this is a report.
Well, we're, we're actually, that's what we're voting on, is, is the draft in front of us.
After it's a report, as a legislative.
Yes.
All right, I'll agree with him.
Okay. James?
Just for clarification, is it the, the one in red?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, you have to let me know which one.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna go.
Josh?
Yeah, for clarity, I am not in favor of what's in red. If we want to move forward with just the most basic hybrid system, fine, but not, definitely not what's in red.
Not taking other mine.
I guess from all I've said today, I'd look foolish if I voted yes. I'm not, you know, I'm not.
So no.
Without this public hearing, John, I, I don't think we should be voting. You've taken a consensus, and that's fine, so I'm not going to vote without a public hearing. Sorry.
That's okay. I appreciate it. Chair votes aye. So we'll move forward with a consensus of four and five in favor. Two abstentions?
No, no red line for me. You all voted on the red line, so.
Okay, one no, one no and one abstention. Okay.
So I'm sorry, which, which bill are you all?
The last bill that came to our attention.
The red line, red line, so no, no wine.
It's hanging right here.
So no wine.
Yes.
Well, it's not just no wine, it's no wine and no beer.
Right.
Correct.
Well, right, no beer, sorry, thank you, Mr. Bass.
But you guys didn't sell beer anyway. So, Mrs. Hurley.
With all, if you're going to write a letter, I would suggest you attach this up to the letter, so that they know that that's what you're supporting.
Certainly.
Because it's not a bill, and it can get changed.
It's not a bill? This is not a bill?
It's not a bill.
This is not a bill.
No, it's a draft.
What we've just voted on, when this gets to Annapolis, they can put anything they want in it.
Joe, you voted for the distillery, and you had nothing in front of you.
This is the distillery, this is this bill.
But for the distillery to work, this has to be put into place.
This isn't the distillery, this is this bill.
If the final, if the final bill that comes back, it, once it's finalized, if it comes back to this table and we don't like what we've seen, Shaney, or any way it doesn't represent what we have here before us, we can send a letter to any one of the Eastern Shore delegation.
It doesn't come back to this table, John. It doesn't.
It will come back to this table.
It will, it will come back to us when they have the final draft.
No, I did not say it wouldn't come back to this table. I said I will bring it back to this table.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. If anything comes back that it's not exactly what we have in front of us today, then we can certainly contact the Eastern Shore delegation and ask them to pull the bill.
Just, just one comment. So this, this is a county only bill, which is known as a local courtesy bill. If the county council was to pull, withdraw your support of it, the bill will die because it, local courtesy bills need the executive and the council and the Wycomico County delegation to agree. That's how they're passed. So if the bill draft, and we will share it as soon as we get it, if you don't like what you see in that bill, you can withdraw your support.
All right. Thank you, Bonky. What, I guess, a letter of endorsement?
A letter of support.
Letter of support, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate all your time and effort in this. Next item we have on the agenda is the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2025 and We have a general discussion first, and then we'll be more specifically addressing the Board of Education. Well, if they do, we can. Mrs. Hurley, we're probably going to need to shove them all down the hallway.
Okay.
Close the door.
Not allowed.
Should have been a bill, and we should have had it before. Yeah. Just to be clear, I mean, in, the, in the package that you all had is a distillery bill?
Yes.
But the letter you're sending is only as to the monopoly bill.
Exactly. You know, we had already sent an endorsement to the distillery.
Right. That was my. Hey, Pam.
Good afternoon.
So there have been, I guess, this is the general, we want to have a sort of a general discussion over the capital improvement plan.
Yep.
There are some issues that were of concern as far as insistencies in, in the amounts that were stated, and the message itself, and some of the line items, and then some of the, the descriptive paragraphs below in the final part.
So, as you know, with the capital improvement plan, there is a process that's laid out in the charter. That process requires the county executive to host a public hearing prior to submission to council. That public hearing is intended to have the public come out and express their opinions as what items should go in the capital improvement plan. It is not intended to be, reveal what the plan is yet. We do show some numbers at that point in time, but it is still a working document until we actually submit to council the third Tuesday in December. That, those numbers can change 50 times. The numbers that we showed at the public hearing in Feb, in November, were a starting point from information that we had gathered from the different departments. We hold that public hearing to try to get the public to come out and express what projects they feel the county should be working on in the future. Yes, the meeting did not last very long. We had one public comment from the Board of Education. So, we held it as required. We held it open until we saw there were no other comments. I believe Council President Cannon was actually there and saw that nobody else stood up. We do not show detail at that point because we are still working on the projects. In December, we submit to council the requests. Yes, the numbers changed from when we had the first one, or for when we showed things on the screen, to when we submitted to council because priorities changed and things changed from there. Since the submission of this, there has been additional changes. Not changes that I can make, we have submitted to you guys. There is a proposal on the table to purchase a new building for the Health Department that has been made public. So, could that change out years for what we do to the hurdle building? Absolutely. But a capital improvement plan, as I have stated to you guys over the last three and a half years, is a one point in time and a working document to help us create the budget. This does not create funding. This does not obligate us to any of the projects listed in here. This gives us as administration a roadmap to help us create the next year's budget and to do some future planning. My recommendation is every year, is that you adopt this prior to us going into the main part of the budget process because it gives us a roadmap to start from. It does not mean that every project listed in here for '25 will be funded. Does not mean it'll be funded by the, at the layer, at the levels that it says, and it does not mean it'll be funded in the format. It does not mean that it'll be Pago. The council gets to make that decision during the budget process. This gives us a, a plan. It gives us a starting point to help make those decisions. It does not obligate us to anything. And yes, there are things listed in here that have the same heading because we have gotten in the past comments, well, what happened to this project? So for example, I believe a comment was made about the Civic Center Elevator and Escalator. The project that was listed and funded previously was Civic Center Elevator and Escalator, and it was to be over multiple years. We have funded the first part of that, the escalator project, and that is underway and actually basically done. I think they're doing some fine tuning on it at this moment. But the second part of that project doesn't mean I rename the project. It just means that the funding left in this is for the elevators. Additionally, for certain projects that don't yet have future funding, we list them on here because there is still public interest in the project, but we don't yet know which way we're going. So we want council to be aware that we still know this project is there. Water and sewer projects, perfect example. I believe we're going to be talking about water and sewer projects right after CIP. We don't have specific plans at this moment for where we're going, what we're doing. Our first steps are going to be discussed this afternoon. It is not appropriate to just throw a dart and say, we're going to fund all these water and sewer projects, and we don't know where we're putting them, how much they'll be, what, what size we'll be doing, will we, will we be connecting to an existing project, will we be building something brand new? I have experienced in my 13 years working in public arena, that if we put a project on and the dollar amount is wrong because something has changed, we're told that that was inappropriate. I've also experienced, if we don't put a project on and we add it because we now know more information, well, you didn't put the project on previously. I don't have a way to win in that situation. I'm told that you have to put it on, but you have to get the number right. That's, I don't have a crystal ball. So we make our best estimates when we create this thing. We do projects that we know have the next step. Board of Education is another example. The Board of Education creates and posts their own CIP. If I was to include every project that they're asking for funding, whether or not we're ready to fund them, their total list is $561 million. Well more than what I have in here. We have historically made the decision to post the items that we know we're able to financially afford and move forward with. In that, the last couple of years, we have put multiple years of Mardele on our CIP because we knew we had started building that project and we needed to move forward. We're in a planning phase at the moment for Fruitland Primary. And so, yes, we don't have the out years of Fruitland Primary on here at this moment. We also don't have everything on their top wish list because we were looking at what funding we felt was financially feasible for 2025. And so we put on what we felt was financially feasible for 2025. We also don't, yes, there are some to be determined. There are certain projects that if we can't get funding from another source, they won't end up in the budget.
The, you brought up the Fruitland Primary. The 2025 commitment is, the 2025 commitment in the CIP is also going to be a commitment in the budget. So it begs to ask, if you're going to commit $4 million to Fruitland Primary School, where is the true plan in the CIP for the next year out? Why would we commit the public's money to a $4 million expense if we don't realistically know where the rest is? The school board's laid it out very clearly. They know exactly what the total amount is that the county is responsible for, which is $48 million. So the responsibility is to show where that 40, for the public, to show where that $48 million will be spread out over the next five years.
And so the answer to that question goes back to, we met with the Board of Education, and the Board of Education, the original plan that you, that had dollar amounts, had HVAC funded because administration said, we're not sure when we can fund those out years for Fruitland Primary at this moment.
Well, if you're not sure.
May I please finish?
Sure.
May I please finish? The Board of Education asked us to change what we submit to you from being HVAC to funding the $4 million to Fruitland Primary. That was a specific request that they made, knowing that we don't yet know when and how much we can fund in the future years. They are well aware of that. We have stated that to them multiple times. So, yes, for this one school, we have one year showing because at this moment, I don't have an answer where the rest of the money is coming from. We offered to them to give them $3.9 million, not fund anything for Fruitland Primary this fiscal year in '25 that we're talking about, and fund, I believe, three systemic products, projects at $3.9 million. They requested that we change that submission to you, knowing we don't yet have an answer for the out years.
Well, I'm sure they'd be glad to take whatever they can get at this point stage, but I still think it's the executive's responsibility to lay out what is called a five-year plan. You know, you're selling the process short when you suggest that this is nothing more than a guessing game, because it really isn't, and the expectations are to have some semblance of reality.
Okay, so.
What's going to happen over the next five years?
Right now, the five years is, is I know that we can.
Let me, let me wrap this up real quick here. And you were talking about the public meeting, where the public meeting is nothing more than the public to give their input as to what they want. That's not, that's not really a, a realistic statement there. There's also the opportunity for the public to object to something that they might see, what they assume to be the five-year plan, and to say, wait a minute, we don't want that, we don't think this is good. We think, you know, instead of doing Fruitland Intermediate, we want to see Fruitland Primary. So yes, what is presented to the public is much more than just something for, a meeting for them to say, we, here's what we want. It's to also have their input on what they might not want to see.
So again, we had one public comment. No one came out to say, we wanted to see this or not see this. I can't make the public come out and make comment. I can't. We can advertise, we can.
I'm not arguing about the number of people, I'm just saying, what is presented to the public? You, you were suggesting it was nothing more than an opportunity for them to speak, but it isn't really. It's supposed to be the very first step of the draft master plan for the public to get some consensus on what was, what was happening.
And it has never been. It has never been a detailed list.
Well, I've been doing it a long time, and this is one of the most, to me, this is one of the, the chappiest CIPs I've ever seen.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. That makes me feel wonderful considering the fact that I have, I spent significant hours on this, and this is actually longer, more detailed, and more information than you have received in any other year. So, since I have done this job, so I appreciate.
I'm sorry to take offense, Pam, but I'm just telling you, realistically, realistically, I thought it was, when, when you see a commitment of $4 million and then you see nothing after, I think it's the responsibility of this county government to define exactly what the plans are for Fruitland Primary School over the next five years.
I don't have a plan, sir. I can't.
It's a $48 million project.
And we explained that to the Board of Education. We explained that at this moment, we can afford $4 million. They asked us.
That's, that's almost, to me, it's almost an ultimatum. It's like saying you're going to go to the moon and just say, well, you know, but we're only going to spend $4 million the first year, and we'll worry about the rest of it later. You have got the plan long term. It's my opinion.
So I was supposed to not take the wishes of the public, the Board of Education, their specific request that I remove when we gave them a dollar amount that we felt was available in funding. I was supposed to ignore their request. That's what you're telling me.
If you had told the Board of Education it would be $4 million in '25, it would be $10 million in '26, it would be $10 million in '27, $15 million in '28, they'd say, thank you very much, that's great.
Well, I, we told them that we had $4 million this year, and we don't have an answer for '26.
They're looking for leadership, in my opinion. They're looking for something more, more specific from the county saying, here's what we anticipate our funding sources to be and our, and our revenues to be over the next five years. That's why it's called a CIP plan for five years, it's not a one-year plan.
So you are ignoring every other department that's listed here for five years. We, yes, there is one department, the Board of Education, that we did one year for because that at this moment is what we feel we could afford.
Josh?
I guess what I'm hearing is obviously, we ideally would love to have a good understanding of where we're going, understanding that this is indeed a planning document, that only the first year, real year counts. But, and if we had more information, you're saying you'd be able to fill it in, but you don't have any guarantees, so you don't feel strongly.
I do not feel strongly that we have the availability in bonding and/or Pago for '26 to put something for Fruitland Primary. That has been explained to the Board of Education, so we offered them two options. Option one is one year at $4 million for Fruitland Primary, or one year at $4 million to systemic projects, and they specifically requested to the administration that we do one year of $4 million for Fruitland Primary. I took our constituents' requests into consideration and put them in this document.
I think that's okay. I mean, I think general, that's right, we want to be able to, you want to be able to show folks where we're going. As a whole, anyone who's, anyone who's looking at it, but at the same time, you know, we don't have all the answers, we're not going to have all the answers immediately, and we have to, of course, you are the lead in trying to make sure that we are being as fiscally prudent and responsible as humanly possible. And if we don't have the money, well, hey, that speaks larger volumes to our fiscal state than, than anything else. So I think that's okay. That's my own view, by the way.
So I, I have stated since I take, took this job, that fiscal '25 and '26 were going to be years that we did not have the availability of a lot of bonding. We're looking to bond three projects in fiscal '25. They are for Corrections, for the Board of Education, and for the roof at the Civic Center.
Can you explain, can you say we're not going to have the opportunity for a lot of bonding?
So the, we look with our financial advisors, Davenport, at what bonds are dropping off, what we are going to stop making payments on. We do not have things stop making payments on, in a lot of it, in '25 and '26, just based on where the amortization schedules for our previous bonds have fallen. Yes, we have availability under our debt limit. We don't expect our revenue to grow as much as it has been. Thus, our availability under debt service limit is going to shrink if you don't have things falling off as debt service. So '25 and '26, we are going to be paying for all the bonds that we currently have. And if I add significant amounts, if the county adds significant amounts of bonds in those years, that bumps up that debt service limit. And those numbers all have to come out of our revenue, constricted revenue cap.
Okay. Then, don't get, I'm not criticizing you, so don't get upset.
No.
I know, I know you're, you're, feel like you're on the edge here, but you say that we're not seeing any, no chances of much, any much, some revenue growth. And I know you don't have a crystal ball. So where do you get that thought at?
I get that thought from our income tax. So we are constricted by 2% on real estate.
Right.
So other areas that are seeing, heck, I believe, I, I see it on social media that people are complaining about their assessments that they have gotten here in Wacomico County and that they're planning to appeal them. Well-
Which are not done by Wacomico County.
Which are not done by Wacomico County.
Despite what everyone at Facebook says.
Yes. And they are handled by the state, but we as a county are constricted to only growing that revenue number by 2%. So-
That's just on real estate now.
But the second piece of that then comes in on income tax.
Right.
Council has stated at this table that the state is saying that their revenue projections, well, their revenue projections that they're saying are going down is they are not seeing as much growth on income tax. We have had, in the time I have been in this position, our real property tax has become our second largest revenue generator behind income tax. Those two flip-flopped in the three years that I have been here. I expect them to stay flip-flopped just because of the constriction on the 2%. But I don't expect the gap to continue to widen like it has been because, yes, I believe there will be revenue growth in income tax. There will not be the, the double-digit revenue growth on income tax that we have been having. So I don't have the revenue growing on that side at the same level that we have had over the last three years. To put it in layman, uh, terms, you have a car and your car note is, you know, $500 a month or $1,000 a month, whatever it is. Well, now, that note is for five years. I don't, you don't stop paying that until five years. Well, if you want to add on more debt, you're now paying $1,000 plus another $500 for another vehicle. That is our debt. I do not have any $1,000 dropping off. I have all of the debt that we currently have plus whatever new debt we want to put on. And so in years past, where, the last couple of years where we have made significant increases to our debt for very specific projects that council is aware of and has approved, we had debt falling off and we also had incredibly good interest rates.
So would you say in the next couple, three years, we're going to have revenue struggles? If we want to spend money like we're spending it?
I will say that we need to make sure that the capital projects that we spend on are the appropriate ones and debt levels should not increase significantly.
Let's talk generalization of the whole county spending, not just capital. I know we're here for the capital improvement budget, but, um, plan.
I do not have those predictions. I do have that knowing from fiscal '24, we did $17 million worth of Pago, but only had to spend $10 million. We had enough space in our recurring revenue to pay for $7 million out of our recurring revenue. So do we have to look closely when we're creating that budget as to how much Pago we can afford and how much we should take out of our fund balance? Yes. Will we continue to have the growth level in, in revenue? We will have a 2% revenue growth in real estate taxes just due to assessments. But we will also have to have a tax rate decrease to accomplish that, which-
And our income taxes to the max. We can't raise that any.
We are at the max.
We are at the max. And we shouldn't raise it any. The policy for the, the policy for the general debt service, the policy for the general debt service is about 12%.
12% of recurring revenue.
Exactly. And we're at 7.47. So there is, I think there's a little more wiggle room than, than what's being suggested there.
Well, but the, the 7% is before the last year's debt went on because, or this year's debt went on. We won't pay that full debt because in the first year of debt, you pay interest. The next year of debt, you pay your principal payment. So we won't make the first principal payment on what we borrowed in November until November of 2024, which is fiscal '25. So you have that debt coming on, which is at a higher interest rate than the debt that we had previously. So, yes, we could go up to 12%. Do I think that's fiscally prudent? No.
I don't either, but I'm just going by the budget message and that's the only thing the council can go by. And when the budget message says that the, the policy's 12% and we're only at 7.47, that's-
Well, it's also a, a prudent use of our money and making sure that we don't, you don't want to be bumped up against your debt limit.
I agree with you 100%, but we also don't want to pay down the, the reserves that we have, draw down the reserves that we have to the tune of the millions of dollars we're talking about because there's a lot of Pago here. I'm very concerned over, also, when I say loosely put together, I say that because the amount of monies that we're talking about under, that are listed as to be determined or other or Pago is astronomical. And it makes it very hard to understand what our true spending is going to be when it's to be determined.
The other have a very specific, the problem is, the other have a specific source. But I would have to have probably six more lines on this main schedule to describe what other is because each department's other is something else. So trying to make this a readable document and not have it be over more than one page, yes, you have to, you have to summarize. There are explanations as to what other is and the main part of the two-point, of the, the other falls in under, I'm trying to remember which department. I think it's the Vestas Refresh for, that is from the 911 Board. $2 million of that, of the 3.7 is from the 911 Board. So it's not technically a grant. The 911 Board pays for that. So I can't put it under state grant, so we've put it under other.
Okay. Couple of questions on some particulars. And anybody else that has questions on a particular line item, please speak up. We usually say every year for fiscal year '25 on the old courthouse interior pain, they're looking for $200,000. And I think every year we try to stress to general services, are they looking for any type of a historical grant to make?
We have, we have looked. Again, they don't typically qualify for that type of product. We, we did look for some of the exterior renovations. They didn't qualify under the different plans. So yes, Executive Giordano did state that we are looking for a grant, a grant person for next fiscal year, which would help also possibly identify some of those opportunities in the future. But our departments do a remarkable job at looking for grants for their projects.
Okay. That was a question. What is the, um, what is the, there was a notation on the convenience center. Hang on a second, I have to, I have to shuttle around here. There's a convenience center improvements. It says for fiscal year '25, it's a total cost of $200,000, but then the source says general obligation bond of 8.4 million. What does that, what does that mean? I thought that was-
That's a typo on my response. It should be convenience centers, both the '25 and '26. I apologize. I made a mistake.
That's all right.
So those both, I believe the source for both of those, let me check this schedule, but I believe the source of those would be enterprise fund balance. But let me, yes, the $200,000 is enterprise fund balance and so is the $100,000 in the final, in the next year.
Okay. And the Mason Dixon parking lot, the fiscal year '25, and I ask this because it is fiscal year '25, it's a $4 million project. You're looking for one and a half million in Pago, $2 million on a state grant, and then it's $500,000 to be determined.
So we are talking with the Board of Education to see if they can provide some funding because they are looking to utilize that parking during school week. So with the renovations at Mason Dixon, I believe Mr. Miller was in here and discussed with you those renovations and how it would be mutually beneficial to both the community and the school to reorient that and to also make that parking available for both teachers and people utilizing the school. So the to be determined is, we are in, I believe Mr. Miller is in active discussions with the Board of Education for the potential for funding there.
Okay. James?
Yeah, under Public Library Parsonsburg renovation, it's like $604,000. I was wondering, what, what are they doing? Are they building, are they building a new building or, it's like a major renovation, I guess?
So the, since the property has been purchased, and let me find the write-up so that I, I'm stating it appropriate. So they have received, um, plans to make sure that everything complies with a public facility construction codes, which is different than what that facility was previously. So, you know, it was previously a, a business, but it wasn't open to the public in quite the same way. There also has to be some parking renovations for it and all that kind of stuff. They, the $604,000, they are looking for $343,000 from the county for Pago. The rest, they have in their reserves. So the project is about 50/50.
The Public Library has it in their reserves?
Yes, the Public Library, and they've committed to spending, that's $261,000 on that project.
I was, I just saw the number. I'm like-
So again, yes, the, um, the council and the county is being requested to fund 343,000 of the 604.
Okay.
But the rest is from reserves through donations and things that they have already in their financial statements.
So it's just not all coming just from-
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then I had another question. The G O B East wall waterproofing or leaking? I'm just, I just saw this and I just didn't know, like, is the wall leaking, the roof leaking?
The walls leak.
In this building, right here?
Yes. So I have staff that have issues with water coming in their windows on heavy rain. So that's a combination of stuff around the window and around, I mean, the building is from, I believe, the 70s.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they are, it is a maintenance requirement.
Okay. Okay.
What's the total Pago amount for 2025 that's being requested?
11.3, approximately 11.3 million dollars. So as I have also stated in the past, that council has the right to make changes to this document. Council could say, right now, we don't want to see X, Y, and Z projects listed in here for '25. We want you to move them to '26. We want you to move them to '27. We want you to take off the list. You have that authority. This has been turned over to you guys for that.
Maybe bonding, maybe.
So here is what, the suggestion I make every year, though. Why limit our ability to potentially find funding at this point? Let us have a CIP with what is listed. And we as administration, when we come to you for funding and you decide, no, we really don't want to fund all that, you may cut it at that point in time, but if you cut it now, we, it does make it a little more difficult, not completely difficult, because we can always put it back in during the budget process. But again, this gives us a roadmap that council's like, okay, we at least like the concepts of these projects at this moment. We may not like the funding and that gives us another four months to reevaluate the funding process when we come to you with the, I guess it's now three months, but, three months when we give you the budget in April.
You know this because I've told you before, I'm struggling with $11 million out of reserves for this year.
So I would not equate at this moment, $11 million out of reserves because the perfect example is what I just gave. We did $17 million worth of Pago this year. We only took 10 out of reserves.
Right.
So we are funding $7 million out of our actual revenue. So if I, if we can make all of our other numbers work and with the growth in the other revenues that we're looking at, maybe all we're taking out of reserves is 3 million. Maybe all we're taking out of the reserves is 5 million, but by saying right now that you don't like the 11 million without seeing how the funding goes, and I don't have that answer at this moment. I can't tell you that I'll be able to take $11 million out of current revenue, but I also can't tell you I'm taking $11 million out of fund balance. I'm saying, I'm asking for us to use cash and not incur debt-
Right.
-for $11 million. I don't have the answer yet as to whether that's coming from our savings account or coming from my paycheck.
James?
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Pam? I, I hear you, but we also know about the state situation, you know, the funding issues there. Are we going to be cut? I mean, it's a lot to think about.
It is, and that's why, again, if you cut now, it is what it is. You have that authority, you have that right. But if you leave us the flexibility to reevaluate when we have all those revenue numbers, that then lets us present to you a clearer picture in April.
Pam, so of the 17 million that we borrowed, I'm just reiterating it for myself, so we only actually used 10 million of it, right?
We only used $10 million out of our savings account.
Okay.
We used $7 million out of our just regular revenues.
Okay. And, and so it has brought our reserves down or are we back to where we were when we were here last year?
Let me get the audit in next month.
Okay.
And I will be able to give-
I'm just curious if we were able to recur the expenditures that we spent last year or this past year.
You would know if we made up $10 million.
So as of right now for 2024, we haven't made up $10 million.
Okay.
For 2023, I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head as to how much fund balance we were expecting to use. I, I don't. I don't remember that. I do know we were expecting to use fund balance. I'm not expecting us to use all of that fund balance because we did beat estimates on income tax, we did beat estimates on interest rates because when we created the budget for fiscal '23, we estimated interest income to be $50,000. We made a whole lot more than $50,000 on, on interest rates in fiscal '23 just because of the feds raising the interest rates.
Right.
So I expect us to not spend every dollar of what I expected to spend in 2023. Do I know that dollar off the top of my head at this moment? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I believe, if, if I'm not mistaken, when we make a commitment to the CIP for '25 and it's going to be dovetailing, it's going to be, it's going to dovetail with the operating budget as well, that's a commitment. So the spending can be, the spending can be every bit of that 11.3 million.
So when we create the CIP, we are not making a spending commitment. We are making a commitment to continue to look at the- We are making a commitment to continue to look at these projects for funding for '25. We are not making a commitment that every one of these will be funded.
Some of the impression that the commitment we made for the 2025 fiscal year on the CIP is rolled into the operating budget for 2025.
I believe that's, the charter is worded close to that. So the fiscal year '25 column is really, as she's mentioned, what your focus should be as to what would be in the capital budget, but it has changed.
We have made changes in the past, I apologize, I broke in on you.
No, no, that's okay. What I was saying was that it would be giving you the authority to spend that money, and we could not, from what I understand, we couldn't pull that back.
No, you could. So when we give you the budget, the only thing that gives us the authority to spend is the budget. So if we, so between now and April, when the administration is putting together the budget, could there be changes in the needs of the county even on this list for fiscal '25? Yes. So when we come to you with the budget, we are planning to try to fund the items that are listed in fiscal '25. Does it mean that every single one of them will be able to be funded when administration brings you forward the budget? No. Does it mean there could be stuff that could be added? Yes, because we did that this past fiscal year. There were a couple of projects that were added during the budget process that we brought out to council and said, okay, these weren't on the capital improvement plan, but since that capital improvement plan was created and approved in February, the situation has changed. Perfect example of making changes is, again, the building that we're looking at on Verizon. That was not on any capital improvement plan, and we're making, we're bringing forward to council a budget amendment to buy that, which will amend the capital budget, which will give us the authority to purchase it if council so approves it. The only thing that sets the funding is the budget that you strike in June, and any budget amendment that you create after that. This document could say for '25, $100 million. And if council only approves $5 million in capital improvement, that's what gets funded. I could put everything in the, in the '25 column, but only what you approve in the budget is what gets funded.
I think that's probably part of what Shane was trying to suggest to you, that the 11.3 million in Pago, council's probably going to feel very uncomfortable about that.
And that's why I need complete information on revenue, which I don't have at this moment. But I will have in April, when I bring it to you, as to say whether or not all $11 million is coming out of savings account, or whether or not we're able to afford it with just our bottom line.
That would be a big help, Pam, as well as if you, by that time, or at least as we get closer to the decision-making progress, process, if you could tell us more, more exact what the to be determines might be.
Every single one of those would have a determination in the budget.
Will.
Yes, will.
In the CIP?
Well, the CIP, you would adopt now with it listing as to be determined, because we don't have an answer for you on that. We cannot put in the budget to be determined. That is not an appropriate funding source. If I don't have funding for those to be determines, come April, when we submit to you, we will either fund them from a category that we have, or we will not be doing those projects. To be determined is because we are still in the process of trying to figure out if we can get funding from them from certain situations, and it's still too early in those process. If we find that we have that funding, that would be put in, there would never be a to be determined in the budget, because that's not a funding source. So that will be 100% resolved when we submit you a budget in April.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I'm in no way, am I questioning your integrity, Pam, I got a lot of respect for your work, just so you know that.
Thank you.
I just was telling you from my first reaction to this budget, it seemed kind of scattered to me, and that's no real reflection on you. Personally, I think you're overworked, to be quite honest with you.
We do, my staff does a remarkable job in finance.
And we appreciate it.
And so, but as you see, I make mistakes and
So did we.
I put in something that said bond when it should have said Pago.
You allowed one.
You might find more than one in this, because, you know, these things happen. I have other people look at it. I'm assuming when you read something that you've written, it reads exactly as you think it's supposed to read, and then somebody else reads it and they're like, well, what, that doesn't say what you thought it said. I do that all the time.
As a novice compared to what work you do, I'm going to give you Mr. Atkins' comments here. I think they're very informative as far as maybe something that could possibly, you know, hit some extra insights. I thought that there was also statements to the effect of the solar on the roof, if we're talking about a new roof with Steve for the Civic Center. Maybe we would might consider putting solar on the roof. I thought that was also a lot, a really good.
That is something that we could consider. The also thing to consider is that right now, we're still in the negotiating process. Again, council approved the concept of a solar farm out by the airport, which would provide all of the energy for the county at a discounted solar rate. And I would prefer somebody else build it, than us build it. So at this moment, that is kind of the path, if that path changes, that is something that we could consider. But the path right now is, is that we would be buying at solar rates for the Civic Center through that solar farm at the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Are you going to stay here while the board's here, or I guess?
Yes, I may, I can if you would like.
The next item we have on the agenda, then, gentlemen. We may have already.
Hit most of it.
Hit most of it, yeah.
Okay, I have one of the.
But we certainly would be open to your input. Any of you guys want water? Gene?
Thanks.
Alcohol?
Let's make it with real plastic.
Beer?
John, we're not in that business.
Good evening. If you could just announce to the public so that we have it on the record, thank you very much.
I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Board of Education.
Mike Stoffler, Superintendent of Schools.
Ron Reggert, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, La Comiga County Public Schools.
Great, thanks for taking the time to be here. I think the only thing that came up, which we ironed out a little earlier, was the concern, I think initially there was a Fruitland Intermediate were two, two objects, two topics of funding originally, and then it was readjusted to Fruitland Primary, which is the very first goal of the, of the Board of Education, we know that, so.
That's right. I mean, also keeping in mind that the council provided funding for the Fruitland Primary project last year, so we have already started the schematic design of that, and are looking to continue with that project and maintain that priority, and also keep it in front of the state for state funding. So we're looking for funding to be able to continue with the design documents for that project and continue going down the road for completion.
And that was the 1.3 from last year, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And so we would be doing the four this year. It doesn't really say a lot about what it is. I know last year it was for planning. Where's the 4 million going to get you this year?
4 million will allow us to complete design development, but we'd stop short of construction documents, and we wouldn't get to the point where we would be bidding the project out and getting the GMP. So at that point, we would, it would probably have to go on hold.
But there's no question, without a doubt, that there has to be an estimated projection for '26, '27, '28, and '29.
Certainly, you'll see the projections in the CIP. Unfortunately, the projections change if we do put it on hold, and they change in a way that is, of course, not official.
That's why I brought it up, because one year the council had the great idea of telling the school board to go back to the drawing board and cut 10%. It came back a year later and it increased 15%. No fault of yours, it's just that, you know, the economy changed, and that's what we were hit with. So we're just, I'm just trying to make sure that we know that we're making commitments this year, that there's going to be guarantees. And we also really need to know what our obligation's going to be, just, you know, in '26 as well, really, I think.
Absolutely, and we certainly maintain the priorities that we have in our capital improvement plan. We certainly want to see those other projects completed as well, but if there was a choice between what we could use, the 4 million for regarding Fruitland Primary and the 4 million for the other, other projects, we needed to keep Fruitland Primary to continue going down that path, so that we didn't deflect that from the state and, and take that off of their list. So that was something that we felt was a priority, and our Board of Education was supportive of that with us. So that's why we maintained and worked with Pam to make sure that we continued with that project, still knowing that we need those other projects, and we'll continue with preventative maintenance and doing what we can to make sure that our schools are safe for our students. But, you know, we wanted to make sure that Fruitland Primary maintained our first priority.
So that, that 4 million's for just planning for Fruitland Primary, or they're like big, like, are you just going, are you planning on building a whole new school? Is that?
Yes, replacing school behind the current structure.
Just right behind it?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
It's a large property there, there's room behind it to construct a new school while the students remain attending the, the current building.
What's the plan with the building, if, you know, if we build this whole building, are you going to tear the old building down?
It would be like Beaver Run, where they built behind.
Yeah.
And then tear down.
Turn it into a parking lot?
A lot of it would be parking for the new building, yeah. It allows us to carry on instruction without being a lot of, without having a lot of interruptions with construction. Like, you see at Mardella, which is a little bit more doable with, with the older students, with the younger students at a primary school. We really want to isolate construction from instruction.
Are you planning on growing that school? Is it, I mean, I mean, like?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be built to a larger capacity than the current structure.
Okay, okay.
Do we have the designs? I know I've seen them because.
We have schematic design, came to school building commission, and to the Board of Ed was approved, and was sent to the IAC and received state approval.
Do you, council have those plans for the?
We can certainly get them to you.
Do you have? It'd be kind of nice for everybody to see. It's going to be a really nice looking place, yeah.
Make sure you have a copy of what we presented.
So the 4 million's going to be for just the plans, right?
For design development.
Design and, and design.
Yeah, so we have, we've, as I mentioned this morning, we've contracted with a construction manager at risk for the project. They're working with the architects on the design documents, which are a step further, much deeper than the schematic design, building towards the actual construction documents, and the blueprints will be used during construction. So it's a couple of phases of design and development. Hetic, D and D, and design development, and CD, construction docs.
Okay.
Do you have any projections of increased enrollment? Because it's my understanding the state only pays for what's currently enrolled or share. Do you have any, I mean?
That's correct. So prior to us, during that first phase of the, of the process, we look at projected enrollments, and we have to be able to provide those to the state, and then that's what they go off of. And our projections are higher, and the state was in agreement with our projections as well. The problem is, as you know, that is the very first phase of the project, and then depending on how long the project takes, five, six years before the new school opens, sometimes we can be, but that's what that's based off of, and our enrollment projections do show an increase for that area of the county. So our school will be, be built for that capacity.
Questions? Yes, Jeff?
A little bit off topic, but Mr. Atkins is sitting over there, and he asked earlier about the school resource officers. Could you update us on?
Sure, we are still, I know that the Sheriff's Department is looking at this spring class to go through the Criminal Justice Academy, still in conversation with Captain Weersberg, and, and those over at the Sheriff's Department, and very hopeful that sooner rather than later, they'll be able to provide us with the, the school resource officers that we requested last year, as we got that funding from the county.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
Anything you want to add?
No, we just appreciate the support, and as always, know that we have 24 schools, and we look for this capital funding to be a main part of what we're able to do for our school system as it relates to that. So we appreciate any funding that we can receive, it's always put to good use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
President, I just want to remind council that we have to approve the capital improvement program by the third Tuesday in February, unless that date is extended by resolution.
So you'll get that resolution ready?
If that is what council would.
That's fine, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a capital project funding request in reference to the West Side Regional Wastewater System, as well as Parsonsburg. And I think there's one more. Just those two? Okay. If you could let every, let the public know who you are, thanks a lot, very much.
I'm Bunkel Lefman, Director of Administration, and this is the amazing Amanda Pollak.
Good afternoon, Amanda Pollak with the Center for Watership Protection.
Great. I'll give you the floor, whoever wants to go first.
Okay. So we're here today to talk about the next step in implementing the Water and Sewer Master Plan. So as you all know, we talked a little bit in November about the high-level master plan that was done to look at countywide, what could you do to provide sewer to failing septic areas and potentially water service to areas that, that may have water issues. So this is really taking the next step. What we're here to talk about is funding for two preliminary engineering reports, or PERs, as you may see them called. They're really necessary to help get funding for larger projects. So this is a much more detailed planning study than the master plan. The master plan was never intended to be a preliminary engineering report, it was looking very high level. So now we're targeting two different areas. So the USDA defines what a preliminary engineering report needs to entail, and it goes through a long list of process. You have to establish the need. They're going to look at various alternatives, including a no-action alternative, and they'll develop cost estimates, so both capital costs, lifecycle costs, and operating budgets. So this will really give us an idea on how much these two particular projects could cost and the variety of alternatives. So we wanted to, to look at two in particular. A West Side Regional Wastewater System that could look at areas from, basically from Hebron to Mardella Springs to Sharp Town, and, and some areas in between, potentially. And would that be feasible to have a regional solution that could be one wastewater plant that serves the area? It may end up being some combination of existing municipal plants and a new wastewater plant. I don't know yet, but that's what we need to study in great detail. The other one would be looking at the community of Parsonsburg and options on how to tie in some part of Parsonsburg, all of Parsonsburg, some area around it, into the town of Pittsville. And Pittsville has been willing and interested to serve some areas of the county, but they didn't necessarily want to take the lead. So we've met with representatives of Pittsville, and they're aware that the county is interested in pursuing this. And essentially, Pittsville would, would be desirable to have the county as a customer, where the county is running the, the mains and owning and operating those and tying into Pittsville's system, and then Pittsville would operate their wastewater plant. So part of what we've asked for is the funding for both of those studies up to a certain amount. And that's because we're in the process of applying for grants from USDA to help with the, the planning studies. So there's two different grant sources that we're looking at at USDA that, that fund different amounts, but essentially, the maximum we could get for either study is $60,000, up to 75% of the funding. So the, the Parsonsburg study, we're estimating to cost $75,000, and 75% of that is the $56,250 that's, that's referenced in your memo. For the other study, the West Side Regional, we're anticipating that study would cost about $150,000. So we would be applying for a grant for up to $60,000 for that one. Because we are applying to USDA for, if you go ahead and approve, if you proceed with the funding, we have to follow all the procurement that USDA sets out. So we would put a request for proposals out and hire engineering firms to do these studies. We would keep them separate. We want to track these separately, because certainly they will take different amounts of time. So we would be starting to work on a request for proposals and develop a scope of work that then could be advertised when funding is available. I do also want to mention that we have met with USDA, we've talked about the programs. Both programs' applications are on a rolling basis, so we're not up against a deadline here that, you know, it has to be done by a certain date, but we would like to get these applications in and get the projects rolling along. So that is the, the quick summary. We do have members of the Greater Salisbury Water and Sewer Task Force that came today. The past chair, Matt Drew, the current chair, Rob Duma, Mike Dunn is here, and Bill Chambers was also on the task force as well.
We had, concerning Pittsville, you know, I got involved in this early, early on when some of the Pittsfield Town meetings. I know they were talking about expanding their plant. They're going to have to expand their plant to handle any additional, you know, from Pittsfield toward Parsonsburg.
Yes.
Headed west, I guess is a good way to put it. Are they on track for doing that now, or do they need something from us or whatever to know how, how, how far to go?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So right now. So, right now, Pittsville is in this PER process, this preliminary engineering report process, and they're working with USDA. They, they've got the similar grant that we're applying for, so that they can look at all the alternatives on how to upgrade. And in their preliminary engineering report that's in final stages, they had allocated a certain amount of capacity to the county. So, they had already estimated, okay, this is what we think we could handle in our plant that could be used by county residents potentially. And that caused a red flag to USDA and said, okay, well, where, where's the backup for that? You know, we need to understand where that number came from. So, when we met with Pittsville, we don't want to hold them up. Pittsville needs to move as quickly as they can move to take care of their wastewater treatment plant problems. So, that's why the county's saying, you know what? We'll take on the, the county resident side, we'll prove that number, we'll do the study that's necessary for that piece of the capacity. And so, we communicated that to USDA, and the county executive wrote a letter to USDA supporting that the Pittsville plant move on their own schedule as fast as they can, and we will follow behind with the other piece of it.
I guess, Mr. Duma's in the audience. You represent Pittsville, right?
Yeah.
You want to come up? I guess my, my concern is, if Pittsville moves forward, but they don't build a large enough plant, have enough capacity to take care of what the county's going to need or want, how is that, how does Pittsville know exactly what they need to do?
Yep. Again, Rob Duma, Chair of the Greater Salisbury Task Force on Water and Sewer, also represents the town of Pittsville, is their town engineer. Pittsville's capacity increase is significant, so they're actually looking to double their capacity. Right now, they're running 90 to 95%, and, you know, they only have so many connections that they can make currently. But with this new plant, that'll relieve their, their stress of just having a few units here and there. So, they're willing to accept a significant portion from the county, and I can't remember the exact number, but it was 20,000 or 30,000 gallons they could comfortably take in and would be willing to take that in.
How many homes would that be?
It's 250 gallons a home.
Is this, you're talking day now?
What's that?
You're talking a day?
Gals per day.
Yeah, gallons per day, my apologies.
Uh huh.
Yeah. So, you, in MDE's terms, you do 250 gallons per home, so take that, and, you know, that 20,000 to 30,000, I think, was an acceptable number to Pittsville at that time. But again, once the county studies developed, get that number pinned down, service areas tied in, and then get a nice formal request so that the county and the town all work together.
And you heard what we just said about the schools? You know, you go build a school, and by the time you get it done, it's over capacity, you know? We don't want to end up in that situation, as long as we've got Pittsville that's willing to work, you know, with the county to help us solve the issues that we're having on the east side of the county, so.
Absolutely.
And again, part of this is, just like you said, solving the issues. So, part of the study would be working closely with the Health Department, which we're doing to try to identify the need. Where are they having issues? Where are they getting septic applications? Where do they have mound systems pumping, you know, all of that, and really understanding the service area, so.
I think another thing you need to think about in there, when Pittsville does this, they may want to expand also.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's homes in the town of Pittsville that are still on septic, and they just don't have the capacity.
And a lot of private property near Pittsville that people would like to build homes if they had water and sewer.
Absolutely, yeah.
This, Josh?
Just for clarity again, I apologize, I might have missed what you said, but this is just for wastewater, not water? I know Pittsville had the issue with the yellow water for a long time, and I still hear people grumbling about it. I don't know if that's still the case, but is this just for wastewater for both projects?
So, Pittsville's interest was to, to extend sewer service. At this time, they weren't interested in looking to extend water service. So, in general, the county's interested in watering and sewer service. The, the preliminary study that we had, had done by GMB with the, the funds left over from the master plan to look at the West Side, had evaluated water service as well, and that it's more feasible to serve each water system with their own water system instead of interconnecting them, because it's not as expensive. You know, there's not the same treatment concerns or costs and the discharge. So, at this time, this study would be for wastewater, but that doesn't mean we're not ultimately planning to serve both water and wastewater on the west side of town, potentially.
You referenced the West Side Regional Wastewater. You're talking about the Mardella?
Mardella Springs, but then also looking as far as Sharp Town and Hebron, and really that whole area.
All right, just to make sure. Now, how does that all come into play with the 400,000 total for the, within the CIP? We've got 100 for each project, so that'll be, that'll be additional after we do this?
Yeah, so, when we, we put the, a marker in the CIP to sort of do these sorts of studies, as, as well as, I believe you probably put the position in there as well.
Yes.
So, well, the position wouldn't be in this, because it's a CIP.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
But, so, again, this has been one of those things, as I stated previously, it's a moving part since we actually originally submitted, is that this has come to me, for this $225,000 has come to me and to the council. We don't yet know where we want to spend another $400,000, but if we don't put something in, then we come back to you like this. So, this gives us the ability, if, say, the additional money in the CIP gives us the ability to say, okay, next year, we, we're ready to look at, I don't know, we want to look at maybe expanding some, helping Fruitland expand something to county residents, or we want to look at connecting a section into the city of Salisbury, and we need to do a PER. So, we would have those funds available to us. This request here is so that we can get started now, and that maybe when we're doing our CIP next year, there might be some concrete dollars that we're ready to spend on a design or something like that for these two specific projects, but we would already have money in '25 to start, start the next phase.
I think, I think we recognize that this is a very high priority project, without a question, and everybody, I think, has been very, more than prudent as far as making sure we're following the procedures and evaluating the costs, so, yeah, I think it's good. This, Josh?
A comment, just, I always said, I, I told them I would bring it up. I briefly lived in San Domingo. The folks there often feel like they're left behind, and they, they have a concern that their community is not going to grow, and that basically, its, its best days were behind them, and they'd rather have their best days in front of them. So, whatever we do, especially on the west side, it'd be nice if we're, Sharp Town's right there, you know, Mardella's not that far away, it'd be nice if somehow that was a part of the calculus in a way that we don't. I told them I would let, I would make sure we say that we, you're not going to leave them behind.
And they, they are, they are part of that calculus. They were part of the preliminary work that GMB did to look at San Domingo and what it would take to extend lines there, so absolutely, thank you.
Thank you all for, appreciate it.
Just out of all the areas in the master plan, the West Side and the Parsonsburg were the most urgent need. I, I take it?
So, most urgent need, but also potentially the most feasible. So, part of what we wanted to do, and that the task force helped to prioritize, is, is realistic areas to tackle. So, we didn't, didn't necessarily want to go with the most challenging, most remote spot first, even though there may be a very high need, but we wanted to go with projects that we thought could be accomplished. And where Pittsville was already planning to add capacity, they're already going through a treatment plan upgrade, that was a, you know, a prime location. Sharp Town and Hebron are also both facing wastewater treatment plan upgrades, so it's a wonderful time to talk, that we, we met with some of their representatives, and so it's, it's an appropriate time to look at a more regional plan before they get too far ahead and, and upgrade their plant. So, there is high need, but there's a lot of high need in the county, so.
Thank you. What, what, what advances are we seeing with Salisbury as far as hooking up? Because we know we have this Chesapeake Heights corridor, Pacific Avenue, Atlantic Avenue there. Is there any?
There are, there are. So, since we met last, I guess in November, we have targeted a few different areas. We've sent those information to the Health Department, and Matthew McConaughey's been helping us digging up more records to prove the need without having to do septic surveys. So, if, if he can help us prove the need by septic permits and, and those types of things. So, he has turned over a significant amount of data. We have a, a meeting with him in a couple of weeks, and if we're all coming to a consensus and doing some rough estimates, then we can start to approach Salisbury with some specific locations. We haven't done that yet, and we haven't started outreach. We wanted to make sure that they, again, were feasible, that these were areas that could be served potentially by gravity sewer. So, those will be much more straightforward, these small neighborhoods, than either of the things we're talking about today. So, we wouldn't be going to this level necessarily. What you've put in the CIP could be used for design of a smaller connection like that, if those are just running, you know, running sewer down a few streets. So, Salisbury is rolling along. It just doesn't, it doesn't need this funding yet, and, and I don't want to say those areas yet and get ahead of, ahead of ourselves, just because we are still working with the Health Department, but we are making some good progress around there.
Are you okay with this, 2:25?
Sounds good.
We're good, all right. We will, Ms., Ms. Hurley will prepare the paperwork for us, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so it's going to require a public hearing. This is an amendment to the fiscal year '24 capital budget, so it does require a public hearing, and we can do that the next meeting.
Just for that little bit of money?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Lord.
Good night.
200,000.
Okay, this time we adjourn the legislative session and go into closed session. Thank you very much. We're reconvening in legislative session, Wycomica County Council, for 2024, 2024-02,